Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President, I believe we have a quorum.
Thank you.
We can start on your call.
Yes. Trenton City Council meeting Thursday, September 5th, 5:30 PM. We're officially calling this meeting to order. Let us all please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws, nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President, roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Vice President Figueroa Kettnerberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. For the record, Councilwoman Gonzalez is present via telephone. Councilwoman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Colagi. And in for West Bridges, City Attorney is Mr. Palmer Richardson. Thank you. And Madam President, if it's your wish, I will read the invocation at this time.
Yes.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, as I understand, well, at this point, from what I see, if there's nothing additional or that you may have, we can move to public comment.
Yes.
Could I have the public comment clipboard, please? And to the audience, so you know, public comment. Well, hold on one moment here. Madam President, I have fourteen individuals listed for public comment this evening.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to limit public comment to three minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, I'll poll the board. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kettnerberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. So the public, public comment will be three minutes for each individual. You may address any item that you wish. Please understand the council is not obligated to respond. Please state your name and address when approaching the podium. Thank you. Our first individual for public comment listed is Mr. Charles. Is this Charles Lewis? Thank you.
Also, when everyone approaches the podium, if you would please press the button on the mic to turn the microphone on before you speak, you'll know that the microphone is on because the ring, the red ring will light up, indicating that the mic is on for you to speak. Thank you.
We need to register for recording.
Have you on the record.
We want to make sure we record you.
Okay, but in order for me to illustrate what I want to say, I need to pass this up again to the city council.
Okay.
The three properties that we're going to address. We already went through it, one ninety-eight, one ninety-six, two oh-two Pennington Avenue. All right, now, my issue here today is, see, you, you guys can't see what's going on out there because you just don't see it. The demos, what going on in the public, you might travel around. But I'm gonna try to get straight to the point. The point is that I lived my whole endeavor in regards to the demolition of these properties and, as you know, and also the, the, the issues and the damages to my property. Now, it's been sitting when I put an offer up, when everything was done, and a demo started in February. The demo was done, the city closed up, the contractor closed up on the defensive property end. As of that point, which I have right here, also, I put the application out, I offered the city four thousand dollars for the lot, and I feel that that's just suffice for thirty-eight hundred, uh, uh, thirty hundred square foot, which was seventy-four hundred dollars. Didn't never go after the city for damages to my property. So if you go through the pictures, you can actually see my property, what my property looked like. They got pictures of the church, the church covers five thousand square foot. That lot is, is, is thirty-eight hundred square foot. So my issue in the whole long fight was not just to tear the house down, but revitalize that area and rejuvenate my property. Now we have a minister, now I already put the offer into the city, and it was May the tenth, which you'll see on there, I had to show my banking account, four thousand dollars, okay, and filled out the application, went through the procedures. And it sat there, went through all the process. I went to Mr. Broch, Dan Roche, which is the in charge of housing economic development. I went through the whole procedure. I went back the next month, he said, nobody else went for the property. I went back to the next month. Well, now we came to August, the beginning of August. Is, I'm ready to move forward, I'm, I showed you my banking account, what's going on. The day I was supposed to come, which is last Friday, he called me up that Thursday and said, Mr. Lewis, the church next door put a bid in more than yours. Okay, now we talk about four months that that application and that offer to the city been sitting still. Now, keeping gratitude, if you see in the pictures, the water damage in my basement, the, the termite infestation at the front of my house. I've never sued the city for anything because I'm, I'm a contractor and I can fix my own. I'm not depending on nobody to do anything for me when I got the abilities, the money and the knowledge to do it. And that's what I did. Okay, but now here you have a minister at this all beautified, it's all tore down when that house was like that for ten years, ten years. He had no concern because he doesn't live there. I do. He lives in Lawrence Township, okay? That church was a funeral home. That church went into, to the, to the church in nineteen eighty-seven, and it was sold for twenty-five thousand to Reverend Clark. See, I know the history because that's where I live. I was nineteen years old, I'm sixty-one. Okay, but we can't have people that come outside a city that live in Lawrence and can go to a beautified area, okay? And then want to try to monopolize lots that's connected to a person's house. I think by all rights, I should have rights to that lot and I should have first dibs on it. Period. He shouldn't even be in the equation. They don't pay taxes, they haven't paid taxes since nineteen eighty, city from the city, eighty-seven. I've been paying taxes, my ancestors before that at one ninety-six and one ninety-eight Pennington Avenue. So we've been giving revenue to the city for years. That church ain't getting none. I, I love the Lord, I, I, I love the Lord. I can take my shirt off right here and it's God on the back of my shirt because I don't play because I know the Lord. But this man not playing in the Lord's game. You know, he's playing to try to take property from people that earn and deserve it. I'm a public citizen, he's not. He lives in Lawrence Township. Come on now. I'm, all, all I'm is asking the city to, you know, have a little latitude here. Even if we gotta go into a bidding war, I'm, I'm ready for it. Trust me on that, I lay my life down for it. Because this house and these properties that I went to, four generations. Unfortunately, my brother had the house that, that caused the problem because my father owned both of them. But I still maintain one ninety-eight Pennington Avenue. Just look at one ninety-eight and look at the pictures of my house. The front, the back, everything, it's always in order and my taxes is paid up. You know, so I know only got three minutes. Uh, you know, I'm not gonna leave you with those pictures. I just wanted y'all to glance through them and get an idea of how to.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, alright. Can I have that stuff? Yeah, I need that back.
No, oh, you want this back? We looking.
We'll have him, we'll have him returned to you.
Go ahead and look at it because I'll wait until you start looking at it. And, and okay.
We'll have him returned to you, sir. Margaret Tucker.
I'm here today because I've come to speak to you on behalf of my church, Victory Tabernacle. And every year for, I've been going to that church since I was seventeen years old.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can we have your name and your address, please?
Margaret Tucker.
And your address, please?
Two eighty-five Hamilton Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
And I've been going there for, since I was seventeen years old. And every year, they have a parade that goes down our street. And now that I became a senior, it was okay when I was younger, but now that I'm a senior citizen, it's hard to park. I come to church, I go to Sunday school, I usually go to church every Sunday, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And it's a very disregard for parking and they don't make announcements and letting us know that they're going to have a parade. There's like two parades that come during the summertime. And it's hard to park. And when I have to park, I have to park like two blocks from my church. And I have my grandchildren and they're, you know, like one and two years old, five years old. And it's hard trying to find a parking space to get to my service on Sunday. And yes, it's on Sunday morning and the parade comes through and then they're so loud. And then when I come out of church, people are sitting on our steps of the church and they won't move out the way because sometimes we have to park on the sidewalk. If we can, you know, whoever gets to church first, you know, we can. And they're sitting on our cars and we asking them to move and we're trying to get off the sidewalk to, to try to get home. And the church is out in, um, like Hamilton and I live in Ewing. And, and, and the streets are so blocked off that you have to go like a half an hour. It takes me just to get back into Ewing because every street is blocked off. But if, even if I go down there by Trenton High School, I can't get through because you can't cross over to get into Ewing Township. And, and, and it's, it's, it's been bothering me, you know, because it doesn't make sense that I can't go worship my God because of a parade and there's nowhere to park. And that's all I ask for you. Thank you.
Can I just ask one quick question? I'm sorry, just for clarity. You, you said the church is in Ha- Hamilton? You, you live in Ewing?
Yes.
You live in Ewing?
Yes.
But the concern, the, the, the church, who's at two eighty-five Hamilton Avenue?
Victory Tabernacle Church of God in Christ.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Kevin Bynes.
My name is Pastor Kevin Bynes, Jr. My church is Victory Tabernacle Church of God in Christ, two eighty-five dash two eighty-seven Hamilton Avenue. I have serious concerns in reference to the issuing of permits to allow parades on our street during our church services. These parades are disruptive to our worship, threatening to our safety and obstructive to our parking. We have not been considered during the planning and entire process of these events. Yesterday was the worst day I've experienced as a pastor in this city. Most of our members couldn't get to church because our streets were blocked. The ones that made it there prior to street closings were forced to park on the sidewalk. The gathering crowd of parade watchers blocked all of our entrances and exits to our church by sitting on our private property stairs, most of whom were intoxicated. The smell of marijuana blitzed our church service like an invading army. When I went outside, I asked them to please honor and respect our church and move from our entrance and exit stairs where they had gathered with adult beverages and marijuana. I was challenged and threatened. I called the police and was told they're on their way. I'm still waiting to see a police car even tonight. My wife was verbally assaulted and told F U B. I had to restrain my son from defending his mom along with myself. This was utter chaos. I called police again and was told to take it up with the city. As a pastor in this city, I am utterly disgusted with the responses I've received or lack thereof. I perceive if nothing is done about this, future parades will gendered incidents that will not be favorable to anyone. Let the record show that I've complained and now the ball is in your court. Please advise, regrettably submitted disgruntled pastor and congregation, Victory Tabernacle. This email was sent out September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. I came to this very same council meeting last year on the twenty-first, uh, and I, I read this same email. Ms. Frisbee wasn't here, she was electronically connected, amen, to this meeting. I was told that, um, we're sorry if these things are happening, they shouldn't be having parades. And that was it. Uh, words, empty platitudes. On the twenty-fifth of this year, there was another parade. This time, not one member was able to get to church. I got there early because something told me to come to church early. I was able to get down the street and I got there early. We had to cancel our church service. Uh, and tonight, we're here in this meeting. This, these, um, processes, these actions are direct, uh, egregious assault on our constitutional rights as a church, which says Congress shall not make a law respecting an establishment of religious or prohibiting. It's out of control.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norman Marcel.
Good evening. My name is Norman Marcel. The address I'm talking about is two eighty-five Hamilton Avenue. My title is Elder. I'm called, I'm asking specifically that they schedule parades on the Hamilton Avenue route on Saturdays or at least after three PM on Sundays to avoid and to mitigate the nuisances and all the hazardous conditions with the churches. There are three large churches with congregations on Hamilton Avenue between Chambers Street and Hudson Street. We're on Hamilton and Hudson. That was the pastor of the church and one of the mothers at the church that we're also talking. Particularly, I'm talking about two eighty-five Hamilton Avenue, Victory Tabernacle Church of God in Christ. Been overwhelmed for the past three years with people trespassing by sitting on the outside, blocking the doorways as the services were being held so they could observe the parade and arguing, making the situation hazardous for our congregation. And we own the property. We pay taxes on that property. But we gotta fight with the parade and we gotta fight with just existing because they're having a parade. We're not saying they can't have a parade. We're happy for them. We should be able to coexist. All of our concerns for the last three years have been going on deaf ears. I'm just here to see why. We have a food ministry at that same site. Every Saturday, we feed forty to sixty families every week. Consistently, they come. They're sometimes there lined up before I even get there in the mornings. I maybe get there about eleven o'clock. They're there. Okay, this year, we have a community initiative done by We Care. We share mentoring program, which is a five oh-one C three that I own. And it's also a part of one of the church ministries there. We're doing an art workshop for the youth and adult members of the community. And we don't understand why we're upset by the Trenton City Council and the Police Department to be at odds with the community when we, we should be partnering. Okay, I have another five oh-one C three that's going.
Certainly. Well, sir, I believe that is your time. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
I also.
Thank you, sir.
That is it, sir.
Thank you, Elder.
Security.
Thank you.
Security. Thank you. Charles Hardy.
Hi, Charles Hardy, I'm the clerk of the Trenton Meeting of Friends at one forty-two East Hanover. And the concern that has been decades long is how parking on that street, especially in front of our building, but the entire one hundred and two hundred block of East Hanover is in disarray. We have right in front of our meeting house, supposedly no parking all the way from the fire hydrant to the corner. However, there's well over a hundred feet there and you've got twenty-five feet for the parking, for the hydrant, another twenty-five feet for the corner, there's a space in between. We have had the situation of the volunteers who are coming for the arm-in-arm distribution out of the meeting house on Tuesdays, getting ticketed because they've parked there. And there, it's conflicting signage. So one says no parking at any time, another says it's a loading zone for I don't know what. But that's, that, a, a study of the, the thing there. And of course Orchid House, bless them, they have now taken up a couple of parking spaces with the outdoor dining. No complaints to that, but the parking did not get better because of that, of course. And why there's no parking from the Broad Street corner on East Hanover all the way down to, um, what used to be Pat's, the thing that Dan owns, the parking lot there. I'm not sure why there's no parking there. So it, it needs a study and we'd really appreciate that. Concerning our meeting and the concern that we have for the, for the well-being of that neighborhood and bringing that neighborhood up and protecting the children there. Right behind our property is what I always assumed was the parking lot for the Y when it existed. I used to park there when I went to the Y. It turns out from the tax map that almost half of that is owned by the city, given the addresses on North Montgomery, but there was no entrance into it at all except off of Academy. But I know the city came and cleaned up when someone had left huge piles of trash. And a couple of times I did the Gov Alert thing and eventually that, that pile of trash disappeared. But right against the street, um, where there's a chain link fence, it is just very much of an eyesore and it just gives, you know, and it, how can the kids have pride in their neighborhood when they're walking past this and looking at this all the time? So I would like to ask the city to, at least the part of it that belongs to them according to the tax map, make some effort to clean up more than just taking away some bagged trash that someone had left. And that's it. Thank you very much and I hope that there are people from the city who can hear and deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pearlene Waters, did I get that correct? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pearlene Waters. My address is fifty-nine Turrell, Tyrell Avenue. I'm here to thank you, um, City Council for the ordinance twenty-four zero sixty, authorizing the honorary street naming of East Day Street at Chambers to Father Brian McCormick Way. Also, I want to thank you for twenty-four zero sixty-one for, um, Mr. Bingum. Uh, I have said before you today information that we had submitted with our application. For those of you who might not be familiar with the work that Father Brian McCormick had done here in the city of Trenton. So I thank you for allowing us to honor him in that way. Secondly, as a resident of the North Ward and a homeowner whose, um, house has been affected by, um, the demolition of the properties fifty-nine and a half through sixty-seven, uh, Turrell Avenue. And the tree had fallen and I've been waiting two years for them to clean up the vacant lot and the construction debris from the side of my house and for it to make the corrections to the sidewall work that was done at fifty-nine, um, Tyrell. Thank you very much for letting me address you with my concern.
Thank you.
Eletra Hair.
Thank you. I'm Eletra Brown Hair. And I'm here representing Victory Tabernacle Church of God in Christ, two eighty-five, two eighty-seven Hamilton Avenue, where I'm a church secretary. Thank you. We are, we've been having a problem. And it's not that we're against civic and community activities. It's just that it's been infringing upon the rights of our church. We have parades. We started with Saint Patrick's Day, but then they moved that someplace else. I believe the Puerto Rican Day Parade, they moved that someplace else. But we still have a problem with the Guatemalan Ecuadorian Parade. And again, the Guatemalan Parade will be in another week or two. For the last few years, we've come, we complain, we have parking designated for Sundays for handicap parking in front of our church because it's very difficult to park. And so they gave us special signs with the dates, the days of the week we are there for us to park. However, we don't get noticed there's a parade till we show up on Sundays. We see the sign might have been put there on a Saturday. So unless someone came by there on a Saturday, we don't even know there was a parade scheduled because we don't get any notice of it. And then we park up on our property, which is the cobblestone area that goes to the sidewalk and then we get blocked in. The police don't assist us in parking or getting to and from the building. We have handicapped people, I'm one of them. We can't park. We're being obstructed from getting in and out of our building. We had people wanted to fight with the pastor's wife last year. They smoked weed and had alcohol on our porch, on our steps to the church and we could not even get in and out. It was being obstructed. We have, I have looked up a few of the ordinances in regards to these issues. One, there's a chapter one sixty-seven for noise. It was so noisy and they got even louder because the park where they end up at is only a block away. A block, the second block on Chestnut, Whittaker is the next block. The second block on Chestnut, Whitaker is the next block. And what happens is they stand there because they're going into the park because that's their ending place. And then they get even louder. Right in front of the church where you can't even hear the preacher preaching, the organ going or anything else. We are in church to basically around two o'clock. We have a Sunday school at ten thirty and we start our regular service at twelve. Chapter one sixty-seven, one prohibited noise. It is. Time is up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, if I give you the chat, the articles, can y'all look them up? And see that there's a problem or give me another time to come back. I'd appreciate it.
You can come back at the next public meeting. Carolyn Brooks.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Brooks. I'm an employee of twenty-two years. Uh, my address is two forty-nine Hillcrest Avenue in Trenton. I have been declared thirty-three to forty percent disabled from a worker's comp injury. And I have been waiting for the settlement money to be released for two years now. It has not been. Every time my attorney goes to, um, court, they, um, say it's going to be settled. And Trenton, Trenton doesn't have any paper signed or it's freshly a check, um, to settle the case. And this is going on and on. And, um, my hand's not going to get any better. It's gonna, it's, um, no more improvement, thank you. No more improvement. That the doctors have, can see. It's only going to get worse as I age. And so, I mean, I would like to get this settled, move on and, um, come time, come to some sort of resolution. Thank you.
Marvin Tyler.
How you doing? Good evening. How you doing, everyone? Um, this is in reference, my name is Marvin Tyler. Property is three oh four Courtland Street. This is a reference to my property. Uh, make it quick and simple.
Just need your name and address for the record, sir.
Marvin Tyler, three oh four Courtland Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, um, um, make it simple. Someone paid the back taxes on my property. I went to redeem the tax, pay the taxes to redeem it. So that way, obviously they don't foreclose on it and they don't take the property. So when I went to go pay the taxes, uh, Constance Luda, she rejected it. You understand? So I don't know why she rejected it because I submitted, uh, everything she told me to submit. I submitted, uh, I asked for a tax lien, um, lien redemption calculation sheet. Uh, it was a process. I had to email her such and such and, you know, with my name, proof of address and things of that nature. So when I came in, she rejected the payment. For whatever reason, I don't know why. I said I needed a court order. But in any case, what I'm here today, who do I speak to? Because I went through the proper steps. I've, uh, I've talked to Wes Bridges, which is the lawyer. I've, uh, talked to, I think her boss, which is, uh, Maria Richardson. Um, I know she, I know that she's not employed by the city, but she's employed by the state. So I went up to Newark, to Halsey Street to file a complaint there. Because all I want to do is pay the taxes on my property so that we don't get foreclosed on. And this is a simple lien redemption process. So can you guys advise me what's the next step to do? Can one of you guys do something about just me paying the taxes on my property so that way I don't lose it?
The council's not, uh, obligated to respond. Yes, it's, it's not Q and A, but.
Oh, snap. Okay. All right. Well, well, guess what? Well, this is what I've done. I've sent emails. I've sent complaints to a lot of people. I sent complaints. I wrote a complaint on Constance because obviously she's, uh, she's real, she doesn't understand the law. She thinks she knows the law and she's doing the city more harm than anything. Because, um, she's in a position that holds the city, she's collecting taxes for the city, which is the lifeline, the bloodline to the city. She's dealing with money, but I don't think she know too much about money. You understand? And, um, it's not only about that. She's harming the city because she's, uh, always deterring people from paying the taxes. People are constantly losing their home. The state, the city is constantly losing money. You, you guys can't pay the fire department correctly, the police department correctly. I'm not saying you guys, but the city, of course. Uh, uh, it's, you can't pay multiple, people can't get paid. So, um, the second step is, and I know it's time is the essence. What can you guys do in the next meeting so that way we could put an ordinance of her so we can get her not in office anymore because she's doing irreparable harms to the city. And we need another state official to come down that holds her particular position. I know you guys don't talk back, but I, I need to know, we need to put an ordinance so to get her out of here. Because she's fraudulent and she needs to go. The tax collector is bad. Obviously, she's not doing that for the church. She's not doing anything. She not doing, she's nothing. You understand? We have more money. We have more policing so we can do what we need to do.
Carlotta Crosby. Sam Gaylord.
Good evening. I'm Samuel Gaylord. Um, the address is one twenty San Heeken Drive. Uh, I'm here this evening, uh, Ms. Brooks is one of over a hundred City of Trenton employees that I currently represent, whose cases languish. When someone gets injured at work by law, they are entitled to receive three very specific benefits. They are entitled to receive medical treatment. They are entitled to get paid temporary disability if they are out of work. And then when that part of the process is concluded, they are entitled to receive an award for their injuries. That's by law, not asking for D E N F, just A B C. The city, this council should know that the city itself is actually operating like an uninsured employer. There are over three hundred City of Trenton workers' compensation cases that do not move, do not resolve, and that are languishing in front of three now workers' compensation judges in this Trenton, in Trenton Visonage. There are other City of Trenton, uh, employees in Burlington and Camden as well. But each and every case, and this is by no exception, each and every case we are now being told has to be tried. We have to have a trial on every case because the city is not able to acquire through this body the authority to settle these cases. This year, I've checked, I've gone back, I'm pretty sure that there are only four or five workers' compensation cases that have been brought to this city council. And that's near of twenty twenty-four. Last year, there were ten. You have almost twenty percent of the City of Trenton workforce having workers' compensation cases that are not moving. Your council, your attorneys, now there are three separate firms that are handling your City of Trenton workers' compensation cases. I don't know if you know that. But there are now three different firms handling these matters. And we are told the same thing. We don't have money. We don't have authority. We don't have the ability to resolve these cases. And the judges look at the oldest case and put that on for trial. And then the next oldest and the next oldest. And the case that I'm currently trying is a case from two thousand and seventeen. That's one of your police officers. Two thousand and seventeen, seven-year-old case now is having his day in court. And I just wanted to come tonight and bring that to your attention because it seems to me that you guys may not know that. Thank you very much.
Michael Smith.
Good evening, council. Michael Smith, four Seward Avenue. I just wanted to make this quick and brief. It's about, um, I had a guy fill out for the, uh, Police Department. He passed it. He's Trenton raised. He actually worked on this with, uh, Sergeant Manzo when we had the security squad back when they had the gang unit. I have a couple of them actually, but this one, he passed the test. And I'm kind of wondering why he didn't get on and why we have all these other officers on. It's not even from the city. But they were chosen over him. That's my thing. I have about maybe twenty other guys that I can reach that wants to take the test and get on the force. And they're known in the streets and I feel it's good that they take the test and get on here. Being that they could probably reach a lot of these guys around here and stop these shootings and a lot of crime going on in the city. By myself, I volunteered doing security at certain spots where there's hotspots to keep things down. If you go out there on the Chambersburg, they had, uh, that store getting robbed, the Seven-Eleven. If you go out there now, I don't even have to be out there because I've been doing it for the last four months free without getting paid. And you'll see there's no loitering. There's nothing. Each cop that goes out there, they can tell you about my presence out there and how it is. Anybody, the business owners out there can tell you how I am with security. So the guys that I had under me working for me at the bars, Mr. Harrison knows because he used to help us back when we used to do things running in the bars when we had problems. So each of the guys that I do have up under me, they're legal, some I'm legal to carry. I asked them to please get on the force because y'all would either actually contribute and you can make a, a difference in the city. So the thing is, I'm just here to propose is that, um, if their names come up, there's one that's up already. He already passed. If we get him on this force, you'll see more of these youngsters coming out that's clean to come out and want to take an interest in their community just as I did to keep things down. His name is Davy Lyman. If y'all could take a look into that and see if we can actually get him out there. Once he's out there in uniform, I'm going to have about nineteen more because that's all we need is about twenty of them out here. At least four of them on each side, west, north, south and east, because they know the guys and they can keep this here down. And then to make our city look good and we can start to move forward. So that's my position now going in there because I volunteer as security. But, uh, I got some guys, they want to come out. He's the first one. We need to get in uniform immediately. He already passed the test. He's qualified. He's in shape like I am. Most of my guys will work out. So, and we'll make a difference. Thank you.
Cordelia Staten.
Cordelia Staten, three ten Gardner Avenue. Good evening, distinguished members of council. So I come from, come before you tonight to actually, uh, make a compliment to the summer programs this summer, at least the summer programs. You, um, the pools were all open, served hundreds of kids safely. There were no incidents. Um, you introduced new activities for the resident, well, the Department of Recreation did. You guys had a part in it too because a lot of you participated and that was good to see you out there in the community being visible. They offered the painting for residents, the painting for seniors. That was something new. The Take It to the Streets program, the end of the year extravaganza. Everything this year sponsored by the city went event, went incident-free. And I think that is really noteworthy and a testament to how things are moving in the city. People appreciate those opportunities to get out and enjoy our city, to stay in our city and find all these opportunities, family-friendly opportunities. So I want to, um, thank the Department of Recreation and Natural Resources for their hard work, uh, this summer in particular. I want to also thank all of you because you know I keep up with you on Facebook. And I see that you guys are out there and you're in the community. You're out at a lot of different events. And I know it's hard to do, to be everywhere and everything to everybody. And so you guys have done it very well. This has been a really good year for you guys. And I can only encourage you to keep up the good work. And for those of you who are, uh, facing the election in November, I am behind you one hundred percent. This is my endorsement of you and the work that you've done thus far. If there's anything that I can do with you to help you cross the line, just give me a call. So I want to see you all come back and serve the city. Thank you.
Edward Livingston.
Good afternoon, um, Madam President. Good afternoon, council members. Good afternoon, City Hall staff. My name is Edward Livingston. I live on six five six Grand Street. Before I begin, um, I would like to, um, go ahead and thank, just like the lady did here, um, all of the, all of you who have been doing a wonderful job in our city too as well. A lot of you I see out in the community doing awesome things. Um, I also like to thank our, uh, Honorable Mayor, uh, Reed Gussiora for, uh, the work that he's done. I'd like to thank our mayor's office, our, their, our directors, um, some of them I haven't thanked in a while. Director Anatiere, um, Chief Santora, um, I'd like to look, break our directors of the Water Department, our Public Safety Departments, our sanitation departments and all of our City Hall workers. I, I say all of this is because there's an old saying. You don't know how a person is going through unless you walk just a little bit in their shoes. And, and I say that is because I've been out in the community along with you. Some of you know this, some of you I've seen out in the community and I thank you and I thank you. So I'm going to begin by saying I need a little help here. I, um, I'm going to ask everybody here a question. Growing up, when crossing the street, what did our parents used to tell us when crossing the street? Thank you. Look both ways. Well, the youth now and some of the people even in our generation now, they're like this. Just pretend I have a phone. Oh, I have my phone. They're like this. They're, they're heart in an X in on Findaboo.com. They're playing their Pokemon games. They're doing all of these things. Well, if you give me a second. This is a stop sign. Now, for the record, for the record, um, I did not steal this stop sign. Um, I'm going to show everybody. I, um, procured this stop sign from a junker. Uh, I chased the junker truck down and I paid the five dollars for it. So. But this stop sign, this stop sign is for Grand Street and Dayton Street. Um, I lived, I lived in City of Trenton all my whole life. And, uh, most of my life, went to Trenton High, went to Junior Two, went to Woodrow Wilson. I, oh, I'm already two minutes in? Oh, jeez Louise, three minutes in. Okay. Um, can I give this to you?
We'll be happy to take it, sir. Yes.
For the six hundred block of Grand Street.
Understood.
Yes. Um, who am I giving this to?
To me. City Clerk, Brandon Garcia.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, thank you very much for.
So Mr. Livingston, with all due respect, that has been three minutes and we do have to hold to that time for everybody. So we're done. We've heard you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President.
If you could give it to Mr. Garcia, we will look at it, um, after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Oh, and keep the stop sign. Y'all can keep the stop sign. Thank you much. And use it, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No problem. Absolutely.
Madam President, that is the extent of the individuals that I have listed for public comment at this time. If it's your wish, you may start with whichever council person you'd like to for civic comment.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. So council, I'll do as, as I, um, always do when we limit the time of, um, public comment due to the, the length and people. So I would ask if you can limit your comment to three minutes. We do so. If not, you do not exceed five minutes, um, in your comment. We'll start tonight with Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, it's great to see you all here today. And, um, I want to first thank Ms. Pearlene for giving us all of this great information. Um, it's, it's been such a pleasure reading the legacy of Mr. McCormick's story up here while, you know, I'm up here working. So, um, and we will look into your property as well on Tyrell Avenue to see what's going on there and have the administration address that. I remember when those houses were taken down. So I also wanted to comment on, uh, the parades, uh, because I do remember when you all came in here and I remember the story. here and I remember the story and it was upsetting just to hear how you guys were treated, especially your wife, Pastor. And I think that we should revisit this conversation. We did like explore some ideas of what we can do to at least communicate with the churches in that immediate area to see how we could remedy this situation, to work the parades around the hours of the church services or to have them maybe on a Saturday instead of a Sunday. So I'm not sure how the masses feel about that and we'll revisit that to see what we can work out. I think that it deserves some type of attention. And that's all my comments for this evening. I hope to see you all at the future meetings. Have a great week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out. I want to start with the church as well, Victory Tabernacle. First of all, I want to apologize for how you've been treated, especially the disrespect to your First Lady. No one should be disrespected, especially someone, person of God in your property, that's a sacred space to me. So on behalf of myself, I apologize for what you have experienced. I do think we need to revisit that, especially since you're not getting proper or what I consider to be adequate notice to when the parades are actually going to adjust, so you guys can adjust if need be, or at least be prepared for it. So that's a discussion that needs to happen, so hopefully we can get that taken care of and everybody can feel their voices heard, but above all respect, you shouldn't be inconvenienced by people sitting on your front steps and then not moving and the smell, the residue of weed inside your, your facility, inside your savage, your place of worship. Next, I wanted to say to Mr. Lewis, we hear you, and that is something that we need to look into, you know, for it to be four months and then suddenly that happens, we need to look at everything and make sure that everything is being done in decency and in order. I'm not sure, the other lady is still here, Ms. Brooks, she should not be waiting two years, no one should be waiting two years and we've got to just get things going and moving as far as settlements are concerned. I'll leave that right there. And then I want to thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, thank you for the beautiful packet that you so kindly, very neat, Ms. Waters, thank you, put together for us, that was very thoughtful, you very kind, and thank you for saying thank you, you know, that's appreciated, the same thing with you, Cordelia, thank you, we don't get a lot of folks coming in to say thank you, so we appreciate that as well. Petitions, I did, we got that, we'll look into that about Grand Street and seeing how we can keep our community and most of all our children and our elders safe. I want to remind everyone that it is election time. It is important for us to get out and vote. Who you vote for is your business, but if you are not registered, you can't vote, you don't vote, you don't have a voice, you don't have a voice, you lose your opportunity to complain, because that means you are part of the issue, you are part of the problem. Our Mercer County Board of Elections, they are paying $300 for the day. I will leave these in the back for anyone who would like to work the boards that work for it on Election Day, and you can either scan the barcode on the bottom here or you can call the number that's on there in order to get employment for the day, $300. I want to say congratulations to our city, my mayor's out of town, but we had a cross-country that came back to Catwold Park and we were really excited. They came yesterday, we had four schools that came together and it was absolutely a great time. Wanted to say there's going to be a town hall meeting for our youth, our youth, it's going to be Saturday, September the 21st at 10:00 a.m. at Pentecostal Church of Trenton at 50 North Clinton Avenue, and that will be in the back as well. And I believe that's all I had in my closing. Part of this city's mission statement is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made a scarring of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. Thank you all for being out here and I especially thank our directors.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman President.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I apologize, my mic was not on, but I'll go ahead and reiterate that for the public. The councilwoman does not have, you don't have any comments at this time for this evening, correct?
Yes, I can't really hear most of the concern, so I don't, I'm kind of going in and out, so that's why I didn't want to say anything, but thank you for being present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Harrison?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank Ms. Waters for her due diligence. We're honoring Father Brian McCormick Way. This has been a long time coming, he's done a lot for this great city, so I'm grateful to see this. And with that, let's have a great evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, Council President. Just first of all, just want to address a couple of issues regarding the parades. I'd like to maybe see if we can have a meeting regarding this. Fortunately, the St. Patrick's Day Parade no longer exists, it was stolen by Hamilton Township, but that's a hardship I will have to bear. But seriously though, this is something we need to find a compromise. And maybe as part of that compromise, we need to figure out what, maybe move to Saturday or hours, the church, we might need to be flexible upon hours regarding your food mission on Saturdays, but we definitely should entertain a discussion because I remember that conversation from last year when they came to council. And this predates our time on council. Also regarding Ms. Perline coming and discussed, thank you so much for what you said regarding the street renaming, but also I know you've been working with Mr. Valiant and the Department of Public Works to try to make sure, I'm sorry, housing development, to make sure that that property gets cleared. We've had a bunch of discussions, particularly now the EPA is taking the other portion of that project, to try to make sure we get everything cleared up. And I'm hopeful that that will happen soon and I think you'll be happy with the results once we get there. But thank you so much for your patience, I know it's been a long time. Also regarding Hanover Street, we need to really solve the situation. We shouldn't have any part of the city where there's conflicting signs, it's affecting Orchid House and the other businesses that could develop there. We have daylight, twilight, as well as the Quaker Friends Meeting House. So I really want to implore our city traffic and transportation to get on this, because this has been an issue I've asked about for over a year now. Others asked about this, I know my predecessor, North Ward Councilwoman March Hawa Wilson, she tried to do what she could regarding this issue, but we need to solve this soon. And we need to solve it in every ward, because this issue is not going away. Finally, two happier thoughts. One is later this month will be the next North Ward City Police Advisory Council on 21st, I hope everybody in North Ward who can hear this or get this message on streaming will join us. It's a great meeting, good way to have conversation with your neighbors, other folks in the ward and our police department. And then finally, tomorrow night is the opening home game for Trenton High Football, Friday Night Lights, that's at 6:00 p.m. versus Hightstown, so if you are jonesing for some good football or you have some time available, please go support our team, they deserve our support. And please support this young, these young men and cheer them on as they start their season at home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President Figaro Kattemberg?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody, thank you all for being here and for your comments, much appreciated. Ms. Staten, thank you for bringing to our attention that, you know, all the events this summer have been incident-free, that is monumental, that is powerful and that speaks volumes to how we're conducting ourselves and the care that we're starting to have for our community and for others. So thanks for bringing that to everybody's attention and that's what we strive for in Trenton. Thank you. Mr. Livingston, I really want to thank you, you have done a tremendous job in getting those petitions for Grand Street. You not only got petitions for your block, the 600 block of Grand Street, but you did the entire strip of Grand Street. And I want to thank you for your efforts. I want to thank Mr. Santora also, basically the 700, 800, 900 blocks of Grand Street have been approved for speed humps and you did get all the houses on the rest of Grand Street and it does look like we will get those speed humps for the full length of Grand Street. So kudos to you, thank you so much for your due diligence and effort, it's much appreciated. And your stop sign for Grand and Dayton is in the works as well. Okay, yes. And I also want to thank Mrs. Santora and also council colleague Jennifer Williams. She did mention Lamberton Street, Lamberton Street has been contentioned for a long time. Residents throughout the city are asking for speed humps, you know, throughout, so as long as it's not a main vein, as long as, you know, the police vehicles don't travel and fire vehicles don't travel and there's no bus routes, we can get speed humps if that's what the residents want. So we are looking to get speed humps for the, almost the entire length of Lamberton Street, which is a very serious win for that street for both North and South Wards, we get a lot of traffic through there. Finally, I just want to say that on September 24th at the CYO on South Broad Street, 9:20 South Broad Street from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., I will be having a civic meeting for the South Ward. The police will be there to address crime statistics in the South Ward, including but not limited to drug influx throughout the South plaguing our streets and alleyways, and also we'll be discussing action plans and safety strategies. Public Works and Traffic will be there to address street sweepers, trash and street paving, speed humps and other traffic calming measures and parking. Trenton Water Works will be there to discuss lead, lead pipes and other related issues. And Parks and Recreation will also be there to address the park rehabs and safety as well as some of the street trimmings. And finally, Fire will be there to discuss fire safety as winter is approaching. So I encourage anybody in my South Ward and anybody in Trenton in general, you want to come out and just, you know, speak to our directors, speak to the people in the streets making things happen for us, please come out. It'll be very much informational and we need the communities to come together. Thank you guys so much again and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming and joining us here tonight on this Thursday night here in the beautiful city of Trenton. We thank you for all of your comments and everything that you've brought forward to us. Please don't think that your comments fall on deaf ears, we are listening, some probably were sending emails while some of you were talking. But we stay on top of the different parts of the administration. I'm glad to say that we all actually work very well with the administration and they are open to hearing what it is that we have to say. To Mr. Lewis, yeah, we will look into the issue about the property and the house, it's not right, he fixed it up, he cleaned it up. And then for anyone to just come and take it after all the work has been done is questionable, especially when an offer had been made and everything. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak to it from that standpoint, but I am curious, so I will ask the questions as well as I'm sure my colleagues as far as what is going on. To Pastor Bynes, thank you, to you and to your parishioners, to the elder, to Ms. Hale, to everyone that came to speak out about what is going on on Hamilton Avenue. There are, there are a couple instances where parades have been brought up, where it's been an issue, or there's another place in the West Ward where we had concerns, where there's a church that, it's actually a church that actually has like a big festival that blocks down Bellevue Avenue that prohibits seniors from parking and things like that, that we had to look into as well. Things like this happen and while I understand we want the social aspects of stuff happening, we still have to be respectful in what it is that we do. So I will say to you that our business administrator and our interim recreation director are sitting in the room now, they've heard what you had to say. We will have conversations with them to figure out if there is a compromise where we can meet halfway about the festivals, about the parades and about the churches, because we certainly don't want people to be inconvenienced, to be cussed out and to not be able to park and go and worship as they would choose to do so. To Carolyn and then she left, and then to Sam Gaylord, I think that that's interesting about the workers' compensation cases, about the 300, one, the 300 cases that stand still. I do know that we allow the law department to go ahead and bring in other law firms to handle those cases and other things. If they're not doing what needs to be done, then we need to look at that as well. So there's just some questions that I'm going to have as far as why the long time, especially, you know, he said he's trying one from 2017, like what exactly is going on and what really is the problem? To Mr. Livingston, thank you for your efforts, thank you for your love of the city, your area, thank you for doing what it is you do. You know, when I was saying about the stop for the people that go over the three minutes, I was being slick with it, that was, I mean, I meant it too, but I'm gonna hold that sign, I'm gonna need you to stop, just stop. I like that, but thank you for the illustration, you definitely had everyone's attention because I was, you gonna march around the room with it, what are you gonna do? But in all seriousness, thank you, right? Thank you for being out there and for being president, for doing the work, I appreciate you. To Ms. Staten, Honorable Ms. Staten, thank you for coming forward and for extending the accolades upon the city for the work that the directors and everybody is doing. It certainly is not an easy task to do the work and to meet the needs of everybody, everybody's trying to do what they can do with the resources that they have to the very best of their ability. And so I'm excited as I ride through the city now and seeing the work that's being done and seeing the advancements and the improvements and that we're moving one step at a time. Again, certainly we can't hit everybody's needs all at one time, the city has to prioritize as far as the administration deems it to be. The mayor has certain goals that he wants to set and then the directors fall in line, they all talk about it and then they make it happen. So I just want to commend everybody for the tremendous work that they do and encourage everyone to keep going forward. I love seeing my council colleagues out and about, everybody knows I'm always in the street. I love to see everybody out there moving and grooving amongst the people, people love that, they want to see that, they like that, right? And I cheer for all of them, right? The more y'all out, the more I can stay home. I thank you all for everything that you do, because it's important. Our community needs that and they want that engagement and so I commend each and every one of my council colleagues for being out, for being out, for being present, for doing the work, for taking time, for caring and to try to make a difference to the best of your ability to help make Trenton better. Thank you all for. I was done.
That was right there.
I stopped.
You did.
Okay.
On your call, Madam President?
Let us continue.
Certainly. Madam President, continuing with the docket at this time, if you want to ask for a motion for approval of the minutes of June 18th and July 11th?
Yes, ma'am, have a motion to approve the minutes from June 18th, okay, and July 11th, thank you, thank you.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, we'll see to it. We'll do that through the course of the meeting, but thank you, one moment. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion for communications, to approve communications, petitions and reports?
Could I have a motion to approve communications, petitions and reports?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving on, we have ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 24-51 and ordinance amending Chapter 146 licensing Article 9 cannabis businesses of the Code of the City of Trenton to ban and penalize illegal and unlicensed cannabis operations. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Certainly. And Madam President, if you want to inform me of how much time to inform the individual that he has to speak?
Three.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, sir, and you will have three minutes to speak, the council is not obligated to respond.
Hello, my name is Edward N. Tobias, I'm an attorney with the law offices with Sam Redlich Esquire at Regil Court in Hillsborough, New Jersey. I also. I also represent NJ Weedman's Dispensary LLC, which is seeking licensure from the city of Trenton. In fact, we have, we're appearing before the planning board and we hope to receive conditional approval from the board on July, um, July, September 12th, which we believe would be the final approval that we need from the city to achieve licensure. The reason I say this is because in the ordinance on the, the second preamble, there are, well, first and second, there are two fully licensed cannabis retailers now operating in the city of Trenton. There is preliminary approval for an additional six operators and we are very proud that we are one of those operators. So we have received the preliminary approval. However, unfortunately, we have not yet received approval from the state based on an issue that the proprietor of NJ Weedman's Dispensary LLC, Ed Fortune, will go into. And the reason I say that is because in section two, section one forty six fifty six, basically in order to establish or operate a cannabis business in the city of Trenton, you must have licensure from the city of Trenton, which we are just about ready to achieve hopefully. But you must also, as it says, receive permission from the state of New Jersey. Unfortunately, as I'm saying, we have been trying to do that for literally a number of years. We put in our application March fifteenth, twenty twenty two. We have one issue that we asked for relief from back in November of twenty twenty three. We just had a meeting with the executive director and the staff of the Cannabis Regulatory Commission yesterday, who informed us that the cannabis regulatory commissioners are looking into that issue now. So we, we do ask for relief if you do pass this ordinance at second reading to understand that we would have licensure from the city of Trenton, but we are unable to, to achieve the companion licensure permission from the, the state. And unfortunately, it's an issue that has nothing to do with the city of Trenton. And, and I'll just, you know, have Mr. Fortune explain now that I believe my time is probably just about up so that he can show his heartfelt reason as to why if, if this ordinance is, is not tabled today, at least its enforcement would be for other
Are there any other members of the public? Yes, there is. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Council. I'm actually not a hundred percent opposed to this ordinance. But my, my issue is, I guess I fit in there as being illegal. But I don't think it's my fault. I think I've been trying for the last couple of years. We've had this problem, that problem. I won't go into details. I've complained about those problems before. So I won't go into the details about those problems. But I additionally have a, have a problem with the state. The state will, I guess, is delaying my action too, basically. And in short, me and my daughter both applied for state licenses. If I was a trucking business, which I had before, I could be, I could have a father and son trucking business. If I was a plumber, I could have father and son plumbing business. But for some reason, the state, I think they're stretching their thought process, but they have an anti nepotism type of law. And technically, my daughter applied before I did. And now my license is on hold, waiting for either my daughter to withdraw, which I'm not going to ask her to do, or the state to change their ordinance to allow us both to have licenses. Which, again, is absurd to me, especially when both the state, the city, every politician I talked to has been encouraging social equity and this, that and the other. I think my daughter was a victim of the time when I was in prison and her applying and getting it before me was a great thing. But now it's, it's becoming kind of weird that I can't get my state license based on the fact that my daughter applied and got her license first. And I don't know, it's, it's, it's kind of weird. The lawyers can probably explain it a little bit better. But I find myself now, this ordinance actually applies to me too, even though I really feel like I've been trying. I feel like I'm a hostage to illegality now for numerous different reasons. After I championed this idea for a long time, not only did I champion it as a straight legalization for everyone, also knew the things that I did selling cannabis, I wanted to be not only legal, I wanted to be a entrepreneur in that field, in that industry. And at numerous times, I feel like this bureaucratic glitch, this law, this ordinance, this person who doesn't like me, whatever, is keeping me illegal. And here we are again with this ordinance. The lawyers are working on it. Two or three of them are working on it. But right now, this ordinance, you're getting ready to invoke it, approve it, whatever. Technically, I fall right in there too. So I just kind of want to make the court, I mean, the city council, I guess, aware of it.
Are there any members of the public, other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Yes, ma'am.
We're Delia State and three ten Gardner Avenue. I am very pleased with this ordinance. It gives the city the opportunity to control this particular industry from operating illegally in neighborhoods and impacting the quality of life for residents. Where so long the city had reckless bars and nightclubs and things and we really didn't have the arm to reinforce or to shut down and we suffered. We lost, people moved out. And, you know, and the city's got, and our crime rate was affected, public safety was affected and all those other things. Now, this new industry, you know, people say, well, you know, it's no victim. Yeah, well, until you really, until there is, and then you have a problem. I'm just really glad that you guys had the foresight to create this ordinance to penalize, to ban and penalize illegal and unlicensed cannabis operations. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance, moving on to ordinance twenty four dash fifty two. Ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real properties commonly known as eight seventeen to eight nineteen, eight twenty one, eight twenty three, South Warren Street. And as referenced on the city's tax maps as block one one, one zero two, twenty one, twenty two and twenty three. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Edwards.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty four dash fifty three. An ordinance continuing certain positions, fixing salary ranges therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of the same assistant supervisor of billing and collecting, equipment operator, heavy equipment operator, laborer to mechanic, senior mechanic, supervising mechanic. Are there any members of the, are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, moving on to the consent agenda. Madam President, I have one item that, if you would please, ask for a motion to remove from the consent agenda for roll call purposes. That is the resolution, that is resolution three eighty five.
So may I have a motion to approve, to remove resolution number twenty four, three eighty five from the consent agenda for a roll call vote? And that's simply because that deals with us adopting the budget. So it's a resolution adopting calendar year twenty twenty four municipal budget.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And with that said, Madam President, if you would like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening consisting of resolutions twenty four, three thirty four, three thirty five, three thirty seven, three thirty eight, three thirty nine, three forty, three forty one, three forty two, three forty five, three forty six, three forty seven, three forty eight, three forty nine, three fifty, three fifty one, three fifty four, three fifty five, three fifty six, three fifty eight, three fifty nine, three sixty, three sixty one, three sixty two, three sixty three, three sixty four, three sixty five, three sixty six, three sixty seven, three sixty eight, three sixty nine, three seventy, three seventy one, three seventy two, three seventy three, three seventy four, three seventy five, three seventy six, three seventy eight, three seventy nine, three eighty, three eighty one, three eighty two, three eighty three, three eighty four, three eighty six, three eighty seven, three eighty eight, three eighty nine.
So moved.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to roll call resolutions. One moment. Thank you. We'll start with resolution twenty four dash three eighty five. Resolution adopting calendar year twenty twenty four municipal budget.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty four dash three forty three. Resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of Christie Williams. Administrator ad pro sequendum individually and on behalf of the estate of Alfred C. Toe and Constantine Toe, the city of, excuse me, Trenton Police, Police Officer. She, she hand miles and payment in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty four dash three forty four. Resolution authorizing the settlement of a civil action in the matter of Rose Johnson, the city of Trenton, and in the, and a payment in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty four dash three fifty two. Resolution approving a settlement between the city of Trenton and one ten South Warren Street LLC authorize, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute same.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty four dash three fifty three. Resolution awarding a contract through fair and open process in accordance with NJ SA nineteen, colon, forty four A twenty point five and NJ SA forty A eleven dash four at sec to Zenowitz Sign Co. For the city of Trenton and bo, excuse me, buying through Department of Housing and Economic Development, Division of Economic Development to hire professional services to install wayfinding downtown and in Chambersburg in accordance with NJ DEP regulations for a period not to exceed one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed ninety five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars per RFP twenty twenty four dash twenty two.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Onto ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance twenty four dash fifty. An ordinance amending chapter two eighty three of the code of the city of Trenton, towing and storage to modify the towing fee schedule. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve that ordinance?
Yeah. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty four dash fifty four. An ordinance establishing a program for the dissemination of certain forms in Spanish, Polish, Liberian, French Creole and Haitian.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty four dash fifty five. Ordinance authorizing the lease of city owned property located at two oh nine, two eleven and two thirteen Center Street, block one zero three zero five, lots twenty, twenty two and twenty three pursuant to NJ SA forty A twelve dash fourteen C to the Boys and Girls Club of Mercer County.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty four dash fifty six. Ordinance authorizing the advertisement for the submission of sealed bids pursuant to NJ SA forty eight, twelve, fourteen A to lease certain real property owned by the city located at one forty two to one forty four East State Street, Trenton, New Jersey.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty four dash fifty seven. An ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton City Code section fourteen dash seven point four and fourteen, seven point five regarding honorary street naming.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-58, Bond Ordinance Providing for the Construction of a Skate Park in and by the City of Trenton in the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, Appropriating $1,200,000, Therefore, and Authorizing the Issuance of $200,000 bonds or notes of the City of, of the City to finance part of the cost thereof.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-59, An Ordinance of the City of Trenton, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, Opting Into the Examination, Exemption of Civil Service Hiring Procedures for the entry-level law enforcement, for entry-level law enforcement officer positions.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-60, An Ordinance Authorizing Street Naming of East State Street at Chambers Street to Father Brian McCormick Way.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-61, An Ordinance Authorizing the Honorary Street Naming Brunswick Avenue from the Intersection of North Broad Street and Brunswick Avenue to the Intersection of Brunswick Avenue to Southern Street to Robert W. Bingham Boulevard.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the second was?
Frisbee.
Thank you. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, unless there is anything additional.
Council President.
Yes.
We have a walk-on.
Yes.
I would like to have permitted. Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
The walk-on, please.
You have a walk-on ordinance, I understand?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you would like to read that, or would you like me to read that into the record?
You can read it in, please.
If you want to read the record, certainly. I'll read the record.
Thank you.
An ordinance renaming Trent, the Trenton City Hall Annex as the Douglas H. Palmer Municipal Complex.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We'll designate this. I apologize. We're going to give this a number.
Council President.
Yes.
And that will be 62.
62.
Thank you.
24062.
24062, correct.
Thank you.
There was a motion and a second, correct?
There has been.
Are we in the discussion?
Yes.
Understood. Go right ahead.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. Just two things. Very supportive of renaming something after Mayor Palmer, of course, as our first African-American mayor. And that's a great achievement, whether modern-day people realize that are now being the first at something is extremely important because no one could imagine someone in that position until it happens. However, do we not, as a council, have to read this ordinance? And I'm glad to have it walk on, but we didn't have a copy to look at, just make sure we're all legal with everything. And then I know there's been different controversies regarding whether we're renaming the entire City Hall or the Annex, so make sure for public dissemination that that could be cleared up, because we want to make sure when we get this done, we get it right. And as we've seen, it does have popular support.
So to touch on the second part, it is the Annex that will be renamed, not the front of City Hall. It is the Annex that will be renamed because, from my understanding and dealing with the historical society and all of that, with this being a historical building and everything, no one's touching the front. It would just be the Annex part of the building. With regards to the legalities and everything of it, Councilwoman Frisbee did do her due diligence in talking with the attorneys and everything. It was brought to light this evening that she wanted to walk it on. I have no problem with that. We all now have a copy in front. So what I would ask respectfully is if we just take a moment, let us read it now. Those that have not seen it, let's read it now, and then we will go ahead and allow it to be introduced. Thank you. So we'll just take a few moments of silence. Thank you. Amen.
Madam President, I do have a request from the public for the ordinance to be read into the record for the public's benefit.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'll defer to the solicitor for that purpose to opine to that request. Go ahead, Ed.
Mr. Cologi, are you going to lend into this request from the public that the ordinance be read into the public?
I'll defer to the solicitor.
Oh, so.
I'm sorry, it's not an appropriate request. It's up to the council. This is just the introduction of an ordinance, which is generally done by title. At the next meeting, there's going to be a public hearing on the ordinance, and, you know, it could certainly be dealt with in a much more, you know, expanded fashion. But all we're doing is introducing the ordinance by title. Unless, you know, if the council wants to take a vote to, you know, agree to read the entire ordinance into the record, that's up to council.
So the thing is, I'm, I am going to entertain that because this is a walk-on, and we are being completely transparent with everything, excuse me, that is here and that is being said, I will ask for a motion to have this ordinance read into the record tonight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes. The Annex, right? Renaming Annex.
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. I can read this into the record if you wish, Madam President.
Thank you.
Certainly. Where an ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance renaming the Trenton City Hall Annex as the Douglas H. Palmer Municipal Complex. Whereas Douglas H. Palmer, a lifelong Trenton resident, was the first African-American mayor of the City of Trenton, having served five consecutive terms from 1990 through 2010. And whereas upon graduating from the Boardentown Military Institute, Mayor Palmer was a graduate of Hampton University in Virginia with a BS in Bachelor of Science in Business Management. And whereas Mayor Palmer helped initiate the Trenton Office of Policy Studies, now the John S. Watson Institute for Public Policy, to provide quality-focused research to municipal administrations, and was also an active, also active in a number of other policy endeavors, including the Mayor Against Guns Coalition, which included the mayor of some of the largest, mayors of some of the largest cities in the nation. And whereas Mayor Palmer is the chairman of the Trenton Literacy Movement, which is a movement for second graders, and is in all 13 elementary schools. And whereas Mayor Palmer's leadership envisioned for a better Trenton included an emphasis on economic development, homeownership, utility improvements, public safety, and enhanced municipal services. And whereas, even after leaving office to this day, Mayor Palmer continues to commit, to support community and grassroots organizations that empower neighborhoods and mold the lives of young people, including the charitable work such as Trenton First, which promotes youth development through academic and athletic opportunities. And whereas it is proper and fitting that Douglas H. Palmer be publicly and permanently acknowledged for his tireless efforts on behalf of the City of Trenton. Now it is therefore ordained by the City Council of the City of Trenton that the Trenton City Hall Annex shall be renamed the Douglas H. Palmer Municipal Complex in recognition of the foregoing. And it is further ordained that the administrative, that the administration take all necessary action to implement the foregoing. And it is further ordained that an executed copy of this ordinance be presented to Mayor Palmer with sincere thanks of, with the sincere thanks of the governing body and the citizenry of this great city. And it is further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect pursuant to NJSA 4069A 181 and applicable by law.
Thank you.
And Madam President, if you'd like to ask for a motion to approve this ordinance?
May I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.